Would like to call to order the January 21st, 2020 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting. Welcome everyone. It's nice to have a full house tonight. We're very pleased to have with us tonight Girl Scout Troop 3561 from Westford United Methodist Church for the presentation of the colors.
Prepare to post the colors. Please join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. And after our invocation, we'll ask our color guard to come back up and introduce themselves, and we will have a pen for you. We are very pleased to have with us tonight Reverend Tony Hall from Shield of Faith Church to bring our invocation.
Mr. Chairman, all of the commissioners, the Bible says in First Timothy 2:1-2, first of all, I urge that petitions, specific requests, prayers intercession, prayer for others, and thanksgiving be offered on behalf of all people, for kings and all who are in positions of high authority, so that we may live a peaceful and quiet life in all godliness and dignity. And I think that with everything that's going on today, and as dark as our day is, what you do here tonight and what you do as you lead our county is very important, so I think that prayer is very needful. And I'm gonna ask everybody in the audience if you would just stand with me as we go before the Lord, asking the Lord for wisdom with our commissioners tonight. Father, I pray tonight that in the name of Jesus, the men and women that lead our county, that you would give them a heart after the people, and I ask that you would give them wisdom that only that they can do what's right by the people of Cabarrus County. And so I pray for our county, I pray for every family, I pray for every leader, I pray for every family, God, that is trying to do the best they can to survive. So I ask that you would bless this meeting, that we will have an understanding, that unity will be in our county, and I give you thanks for it right now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Hall. We very much appreciate you being with us tonight. At this time, I would like for our Girl Scouts from Troop 3561, Westford United Methodist Church, if you would come forward to the microphone and introduce yourselves, and then as you leave, to my right, your left, Commissioner Honeycutt will have a pen for And if you would, just tell us your name, where you go to school, and something you enjoy about Girl Scouts.
My name is Amy Bartels. I go to Jan Free's Middle School, and my favorite part of Girl Scouts is camping.
Great. Thank you. You might need to help her with the microphone.
My name is Kayla. I go to Mallet Creek Elementary School, and my favorite part is snacks.
Thank you.
My name is Jenny Carruthers. I go to CC Griffin Middle School, and my favorite part of Girl Scouts is camping.
Great. Thank you.
My name is Emily Johnson. I go to Bradford Prep, and my favorite part about Girl Scouts is camping.
Thank you.
My name is Christie Smith. I go to Mallet Creek Elementary School, and my favorite part about Girl Scouts is camping.
I think camping wins tonight.
My name is Gabby Clinton. I go to CC Griffin Middle School, and my favorite thing about Girl Scouts is archery.
Great. Thank you.
My name is Julia Bartels. I go to Patriot STEM Elementary. My favorite part about Girl Scouts is archery during camping.
Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Lisk. I go to Jan Free's Middle School, and my favorite part about Girl Scouts is AnimeCon.
Thank you.
My name is Peyton Wood. I go to Carley Fred Elementary School. My favorite thing about camp is camping, wait, about Girl Scouts is camp.
Great. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you girls coming out and being with us tonight and delivering the colors. At this time, I wanted to give recognition to a couple people that have left us during this past week that have played important roles in our community, and the first one of those is Pat Caudell. Pat has served as a member of our Library Board of Trustees. She passed away suddenly this past week. Pat graduated from Harding High School in 1965, and Mercy Hospital School of Radiology Technology in 1967. She was an employee of UNCC for 25 years and retired in 2002. She was a member of East Presbyterian Church over 20 years, where she served in numerous capacities, including Teacher and Christian Education Committee. She has been a member of Albemarle Road Presbyterian Church since 1999, was an active member of the Women of the Church, and oversaw building maintenance for church buildings. She delivered Meals on Wheels for over 18 years, was an active member of the North Carolina Society of Radiological Technology for over 20 years, and volunteered with Alexander Youth Network for over 25 years. Recently, she had been very active in the Midland Community, serving with the Friends of the Midland Library as a Board Member at Large, and had recently been appointed to the Cabarrus County Library Board of Trustees. We certainly will miss Pat, and our thoughts are with her family, and we certainly wanted to recognize her memory and how important she has been in our community. The second person that I wanted to recognize tonight was former Kannapolis Mayor Ray Moss. He passed away Friday at the age of 89. Moss served two terms as mayor from 1997 to 2005. As mayor, he led the Kannapolis community through a weaving, a shared future, strategic visioning process that established a long-term plan for improving Kannapolis and its quality of life. He established the Kannapolis Youth Council to encourage participation and involvement in local government by our young people. As the city struggled through the recession and the loss of its largest employer, PilateX, he led the city council as they invested in economic development, parks and recreation, streets and infrastructure. All of these efforts led to jobs, new businesses, and other industrial, retail, and commercial developments. Some of his accomplishments during his two terms included, but were not limited to, the completion of the Dale Earnhardt Tribute Plaza, construction of the Village Park Amphitheater, Hope, a job fair after the closing of PilateX, the current Kannapolis train station, and the developments of the North Carolina Research Campus and Kannapolis Gateway Business Park. Before Moss became mayor, he spent 16 years as a minister of United Methodist Churches, five years as Director of the Inner City Ministry in Greensboro, five years as the Executive Director of Prison Ministry of North Carolina, and 11 years as a hospital administrator for programming in Florida and South Carolina. He made significant contributions to our entire community, as well as the city of Kannapolis. He was a friend and a mentor, and will certainly be missed, and so I would ask if you would all join in me for a moment of silence in recognizing these two outstanding individuals. Thank you very much. We are pleased to have with us up front tonight our youth commissioner, one of our youth commissioners, Zach Brown. It's good to have you, and if you have something to say later on, you just let me know, and we'll give you the floor, okay? Thank you. Okay, first item on our agenda is the approval or correction of the minutes, and you all have copies of those before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented? Minutes, right. Okay, I have a motion to approve as presented. Do I have a second?
On the minutes.
The minutes.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to the approval of the agenda. You will note on an attached sheet several changes, which include a resolution amending the meeting schedule, and then an item added to new business, which appear on your agendas as well. And then we do have need of a closed session tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the agenda as presented, with one exception, to add a discussion item regarding the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution and a potential resolution and/or proclamation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. That the agenda be approved with that addition. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to recognitions and presentations. We are happy to have with us tonight Peter Sabo for a 2020 Census Partnership Resolution Presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Coming before you tonight just to give a quick update from what we talked about back in October, and also to ask passage of a resolution supporting the 2020 census. Couple of things that we've done since we last met in October, we've done several engagements with my partner, Lawwanda Blair Foster. Both her and I cover Cabarrus County, as well as several others, but we've met with the libraries, the Concord Neighborhood Liaisons, the Youth Commission. We've been attending the Lunch Club, Lunch Plus Clubs, and the Rotary. Some of the things, we've now moved into the awareness phase of the 2020 census campaign, and we've gone through, the Census Bureau has added a lot to our website, specifically the public service announcements for videos, and things that commissioners or local leaders can use to help get the message out. We've updated a lot of our outreach material, as well as our Statistics in Schools program. One of the big things that we've just added was a 2020 Census Response Rate Challenge Toolkit for local communities, whether it's cities challenging each other to help get the initial response out, for people to self-respond, gives them a way to kind of challenge each other, and whether it's county versus county, city versus city, it's just another tool for us to help encourage people to participate in the 2020 census. We did recently release what the invitation is gonna look like, and you'll see in the box in the center there, right there is where it'll have the, we talked about how people respond via the internet, that box will have the internet address and the census code unique to their address. If people don't have that unique census code, they can still respond using their address. We'll just verify that that address is a correct one. One of the big things I wanted to point out is, if you look here, for Cabarrus County, most of it is in purple, meaning that in the initial invitation that people receive mid-March, they're going to receive the invitation inviting them to participate via the internet or the 800 number. If you'll see the light green, those people in living in those areas, they'll receive the invitation. The first invitation will be with the internet, the telephone, or an English-speaking questionnaire, or an English-language questionnaire. The dark green, they will receive a questionnaire in both English and Spanish. So most of the county will get the questionnaire via the internet and the 800 number, and a few areas in their first invitation will receive a paper questionnaire. And again, as always, we've got the questionnaire out on the website for people to take a look at, at the initial nine questions that they'll be asked to participate. The last thing is, we are still looking for over 600 applicants to apply for enumerator positions. They can go on to 2020census.gov/jobs and apply for the positions, like I said, we're still looking for about 600 applicants, and the pay goes from $16 to $18 an hour with reimbursement for mileage as well. And with your permission, sir, I'll read the proposed resolution. 2020 Census Partnership Resolution, whereas the U.S. Census Bureau is required by the U.S. Constitution to conduct a complete count of the population and provides a historic opportunity to help shape the foundation of our society and play an active role in American democracy, whereas Cabarrus County is committed to ensuring every resident is counted, whereas federal and state funding is allocated to communities and decisions are made on matters of national and local importance based in part on census data and housing, whereas census data helps determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives and necessary for an accurate and fair redistricting of state legislative seats, county and city councils, and voting districts, whereas information from the 2020 census in the American Community Survey is vital for economic development, increased employment, whereas the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law, whereas the united voice from businesses, government, community-based, faith-based organizations, educators, media, and other will enable the 2020 census message to reach more of our residents, whereas the census count requires extensive work and the Census Bureau requires partners at the state and local level to ensure a complete, accurate count, whereas Cabarrus County and its Complete Count Committee will bring together a cross-section of community members who will utilize their local knowledge and expertise to reach out to all persons of their community. Now therefore be it resolved that Cabarrus County is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau, and the state of North Carolina will, one, support the goals for the 2020 census and disseminate 2020 census information, encourage all county residents to participate in events initiatives that will raise the overall awareness of the 2020 census and increase participation, provide Complete Count Committee members and census advocates to speak to county and community organizations, support census takers as they help our community complete and accurate count, and strive to achieve a complete and accurate count for all persons within Cabarrus County. Adopted at Cabarrus County, North Carolina, this 21st day of January 2020, Stephen N. Morris, Chair, Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. Sir, I hope you, the commission would accept and pass this resolution, as this is our chance to shape the future of Cabarrus County for the next 10 years.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us. It sounds like you have been extremely busy recently.
We have, sir.
So I'm sure it's going to go well. Commissioners, do I hear a motion that we adopt the just-presented resolution regarding the census?
Does that move? Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna make one comment. I don't know what Mr. Sabo does in the 10-year period between censuses, but I've seen him at seven or eight presentations in the last four or five months, so if Cabarrus County doesn't participate, it's not your fault. I can promise you that. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we move now to Item C2 from Human Resources, and we will call on Karen Calhoun for a recognition.
Thank you and good evening. I am the Director of Human Services, and it is my privilege and honor to recognize Mary Angela Caldwell for 30 years of service with the Department of Human Services. Is she here? There she is. Do you have any family and friends that would like to come up and coworkers to join us? Angie started her career with the department in July 25th of 1990 as a human services assistant, and from there was promoted to a community social services assistant, and then in 1996, that title changed to community social services technician, has done the entire career in the same position, and let me tell you what that means. That is transporting our foster children. She started out with adults and children, transporting them, but transporting our foster children to and from, visits, doctor's appointments, and those kinds of things, probably all across the state, back and forth. There are some stories I can assure you she can tell, and some she probably doesn't want to tell. The other thing that I would want to go on record for recognizing her for is a fantastic cook, and we've tried to get her to promise to bring us some cornbread and some banana pudding at some of our events in the future. But exemplary career, we are so proud of her and what she has done for our families and children in the community, and an exemplary 30 years of service. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on behalf of the county commissioners and the citizens of Cabarrus County, it's my honor to present you with your 30-year clock. There you go. Not that you're gonna want a clock after your 30 years of working, but we really want to tell you how much this county has benefited from your heart and your passion for what you do. Truly, what you do at Social Services is a job of love and passion, and so thank you so much. 30 years of that is incredible, and we're blessed to have had you in this county. So thank you. There's your box.
Angie, we would be delighted for you to say a few words if you'd like.
Well, personally, I would like to thank the county.
If you'd talk into the microphone.
I would like to thank the county for giving me the opportunity to have 30 years of services at Cabarrus County, and it has been a puzzle, really. Like she said, I've been all over the state, just transporting kids, you know, but I want to thank everyone, and I'm looking forward to this retirement.
Right. We certainly appreciate all you've contributed, particularly to the children of Cabarrus County. So good luck. We need to change that clock thing. You're supposed to retire so you don't have to watch the clock, so we'll have to think of something else, but thank you. Next, we have a proclamation declaring Black History Month, and I will read that at this time. Whereas Black History Month is the observance of a special period to recognize the achievements and contributions of African-Americans to our county, state, and nation, and whereas this observance presents the special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have played a part in the progress of our county, and whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty, and whereas as a result of their determination, hard work, intelligence, and perseverance, African-Americans have achieved exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, athletics, and the arts, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners for Cabarrus County, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim February 2020 as Black History Month and encourage all citizens to participate in the educational and celebratory events honoring the contributions and accomplishments of African-Americans. Do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We move now to informal public comments, and I do not have the cards. Okay, it appears that we've got 15 people that have signed up to speak in public comments, and I think the majority, if not all of those, are in regards to a Second Amendment resolution. So I have asked our Sheriff Van Shaw if he would speak prior to the opening of public comments and share with us any information that he thinks might be relevant to this issue. Thank you for being here tonight, Sheriff Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to be here, and thank you to everyone in the audience tonight for coming out for this meeting tonight. First, I'd like to say thank you to the four individuals that have taken the time to author Second Amendment resolutions for consideration. I know their resolutions represent the feelings of many Cabarrus County citizens, and I applaud their efforts. As your sheriff, I have taken an oath to uphold the United States Constitution and the Constitution of North Carolina and North Carolina state laws. I take this oath very seriously. My 33-year career in law enforcement has been predicated on protecting the constitutional rights of our citizens. Both the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and Article 1, Section 30 of the North Carolina State Constitution provides for the rights of individuals to bear arms and to have the ability to protect themselves and their homes against those who would choose to do them harm. As the elected sheriff of Cabarrus County, it is my duty to protect and serve the citizens of this county. The laws of this state are very important and must be enforced to ensure the safety of our citizens. Individual rights in this country are also of the utmost importance and must never be unconstitutionally misinterpreted or violated. I believe that each day there are efforts in our nation to take our Second Amendment rights away or to greatly diminish these rights due to the criminal actions of individuals. This adversely impacts law-abiding gun owners within our county. There has been government overreach at times that infringes on our Second Amendment rights, and as elected officials, we must check that overreach whenever it may occur. Supporters of the Second Amendment are not unreasonable people. Like so many people in this chamber tonight, they simply want an assurance from our elected officials that we will stand up for our constitutionally guaranteed rights and fight to protect them against any unconstitutional infringement. The resolutions that have been presented to the commissioners simply put into words our formal statement as a community and as an official body of our commitment to protect Second Amendment rights of our citizens and to only support the enactment of laws that are constitutional and in the best interest of all citizens. I urge the Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution that is supportive of our Second Amendment rights and that is viable and reasonable. I thank you for your time and for allowing me to speak tonight.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Shaw, and we appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you, Sheriff Shaw, and we appreciate you being here tonight. The way that we're gonna handle public comments is the way that we always do. Each speaker will get three minutes to speak. There is a timer at the podium. When the three minutes are up, the, the timer will buzz. We ask that out of respect for the, everyone here that wants to speak, that when the buzzer goes off, that you please complete your sentence and then step away so the next, next person can speak. If, if you don't, then we'll have to ask you to, and we'd rather not do that, but I have 15 cards here at three minutes apiece and allowing a minute between each one to switch speakers. We're looking at, at an hour, so, so that's, that's plenty of time, so we want, want to try to keep it in order as much as possible. The way that we will call on speakers is I have asked our clerk to number each card as they have been turned in, and so, we will start with the first card that was turned in and go, go down the line. So, our, our first speaker, and I, I tell you, maybe to help a little bit, I will, I'll name the, the first speaker, I'll go ahead and say the name of the second speaker, so that person will have an opportunity to know that they're up next. So, our first speaker will be Jay White, and then following him will be Rick Starnes.
Mr. Chairman, Board of County, Board of Commissioners, citizens of Cabarrus County, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As you know, my name is Jay White, and I've had the honor to serve as a member of this board for a number of years and as its chairman over the past years. I come before you tonight thanking Commissioner Kiger and Commissioner Honeycutt in regards to adding this to the agenda for a discussion, to adopt a resolution in support of the Second Amendment. For as long as I can remember, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners have operated by having a planning session meeting on the first Monday of every month, followed by a business meeting on the second Monday of every month. As it relates to the importance of the Second Amendment and the issues at hand, I urge the board to do exactly what you've done tonight because it's an important issue to discuss, and I would ask that you do adopt a resolution tonight in what our sheriff has said. The events that are taking place in our sister state of Virginia are alarming. I believe in this, in this matter and is, in this context, is important for the Cabarrus County to take a stand for the preservation and the defense of the rights enshrined and protected by the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution, and to oppose, within the limits of the U.S. and North Carolina Constitution, efforts to unconstitutionally restrict and/or infringe upon such rights, and to use all legal means at its disposal to protect the rights of the citizens to keep and bear arms. I previously provided to each of you and Sheriff Shaw with a copy of my resolution that acknowledges your oath to uphold, support, maintain, and defend the United States Constitution and the laws of the United States and the constitutional laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and to faithfully discharge the duties of your office. My resolution further revol, resolves that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners will uphold the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Cabarrus County and will oppose any law that unconstitutionally infringes upon the rights they're under and/or under the North Carolina Constitution for the citizens of Cabarrus County to keep and bear arms. The resolution I drafted provides protection for everyone's constitutional rights. It is sound legally and does not unjustly impose taxpayers or impact taxpayers' dollars. At this time, Mr. Chairman, I would like to provide a copy to Madam Clerk for the minutes and to Mr. Cook for his review, my resolution for this board to consider in regards to y'all's discussion tonight. Thank you, and I would ask that you adopt a resolution.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Rick Starnes, and following him will be Raymond Odi.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'd like to start out by asking, if it's permissible, if this resolution, the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution is approved, is that binding or non-binding?
Typically, we do not ask quest, answer questions during public comment, but that's something we'll ask our attorney to address when we get to that part of the meeting.
Okay, all right. I'm here to speak in favor of the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution. I think the citizens here, they're, they're not here in fear, but they are here in concern, especially for what we're seeing on the news now. Look what's happening in Virginia. Look what's happening in Richmond yesterday. That was to be a bloodbath, but it never happened. But the majority party in that state is getting ready to greatly weaken the Second Amendment rights of its citizens. Look what's happening in Washington, D.C. right now. That same party in the House is trying to overturn a 2016 election. They don't like our president, so this is how they're gonna resolve that, by taking it out of the hands of the will of the people. I know there has been talk, very little, of a civil war. They wanna keep their firearms just in case government wants to take ours away. I would just like to say this, because of one particular party, that if there is a civil war, and if our president is impeached, that could happen, but if it is a civil war, it won't be the North against the South. It's gonna be hard-working Americans against the Democrat Party. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Raymond Odi, and following him will be Darrell Briggs.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. It is my right, and I appreciate you allowing me to have that right. Sheriff Shaw, I've never met you, sir. I voted for you. You're doing a fine job. I work with your deputies on occasion due to my job. They're always professional. They're the best. That's all I can say. I'm here tonight to speak on the Second Amendment, ladies and gentlemen. Whether you're a Democrat or whether you're a Republican, I don't care. We, as citizens of the United States of America, have a Second Amendment right enabled to us by the Constitution of the United States. No one, no party can infringe upon that right. If a tyrannical government does so, that's why the Second Amendment was put into place for our right to take care of that. We need to take this movement in Cabarrus County tonight, take it statewide, and look at Virginia, ladies and gentlemen. They did it right. They showed up en masse, they showed up armed, and no one was hurt. No one wants to see anybody hurt. They did it right, and we need to take it national. I think most of us would agree. If you don't, that's, that's your right. I appreciate everything. Hope you, ladies and gentlemen, have a very good night.
Thank you.
By the way, I, I plan to come see Doodle.
Good, good, good. Okay, our next speaker is Darrell Briggs, and he will be followed by Representative Larry Pittman.
Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman. I'm Darrell Briggs, and I'm here to support the resolution to make Cabarrus a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. I'm not here to talk about the U.S. Constitution and how it clearly outlines and defines our Second Amendment rights. We all should be very aware with that. I'm here to talk about the resolution itself. What does it really offer in the way of protections for the people of our great county? After all, a resolution is merely an expression of opinion. It's not an enforceable law, and as such, it can offer no legal protection, so why pass one? First and foremost, this resolution is indicative of the thoughts and feelings of the people of this county and should be so expressed by the county officials we voted to represent us. A passed Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution unites us as a free people, all working towards a common goal. The person who thinks that that goal is just to own as many firearms as possible is sorely mistaken. This goal is to protect and maintain a quality of life that we, not only as North Carolinians, but as Americans, expect. Those goals were written in the Declaration of Independence as life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We expect this, not only for ourselves, but for future generations to come. This resolution will tell North Carolina, other states, and our sister counties who have already passed this resolution that we stand united with them, that we, the people, stand united against government overreach and any unconstitutional and tyrannical laws that will harm or destroy the inalienable rights given to each and every one of us by our founding fathers, and that we refuse to give up those very tools that allow us to protect ourselves, our children, and our communities from such unconstitutional actions and the tyrannical agenda running rapid in our great country today. This resolution tells everyone that we of Cabarrus County as a community understand these issues, and we stand strong in our resolve, and we urge other counties in our state to do the same. In closing, I urge the chairman and commissioners to immediately present this resolution to make Cabarrus a Second Amendment Sanctuary County and that the board overwhelmingly passes it. Prove to us that you stand with us in what could be the biggest fight for our rights this country has seen in many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Representative Larry Pittman. He will be followed by Charles Reed.
Thank you. First, I wanna thank you for putting this on the agenda tonight. I know that wasn't the plan, and I appreciate that you responded to the obvious feelings of people in the county to go ahead and do something about this. Some questions been raised as to why bother, you know, raised against doing a resolution. One of those questions is, since we have the Second Amendment, why is this necessary? Well, if you look around, there are, there's a current lack of regard for our constitutions by many elected officials, evidenced by what's going on in Virginia. Also, the state of Washington has a long list of anti-Second Amendment laws they're fixing to pass. It's a thing that is a problem around the country. I believe each of you has a copy of the resolution I sent in and the letter covering that, and as I stated in there, I've seen it in the North Carolina Legislature. There are forces in the North Carolina Legislature who want to take guns away from our citizens, whether they've done anything wrong or not. There are things that are suggestions, what's called red flag laws, where citizens' gun rights would be violated, the guns would be taken away without due process, and we don't need these things to happen. So, it is something that we are facing in North Carolina Legislature, and I believe if control of the legislature changes hands, these laws are gonna be passed and put into effect. Question is, what will we do about it? What will be our response? The people, I believe, have a right to know that our local officials will not obey unconstitutional laws, ordinances, court orders, or executive orders. Second thing is, some people say if it's not, if it's non-binding, what is the value of the resolution since state law overrides local authority? Laws that are being proposed in various places would violate the Constitution. If they violate the Constitution, they would be automatically invalid, but many government officials will obey them anyway. We don't need that to be happening. And I would say that not only are you not obligated to obey or enforce unconstitutional laws, but your oath to uphold the constitutions, as mine, obligates you and me not to do so. The people of Cabarrus County need to be assured that our local officials understand this, since so many government officials do not. Of course, some people have said we shouldn't say sanctuary because of the sanctuary movement in regard to illegal aliens, but I'm saying, we're calling it sanctuary because we're showing what sanctuary ought to be in this country. So, I, I'm fine with the word sanctuary on this. In Romans 13, verses 1 through 7, the Apostle Paul tells us to be subject to the governing authorities and, you know, calling on Christians to be good citizens, and I'm certainly fine with that. But I would remind you or let folks who may not know it know that for decades prior to the American Revolution, preachers like myself, I wasn't there then, I'm getting a little old, not that old, but preachers like myself who understood God-given rights, were using that same passage because it said that there is no authority except what is given by God. And they interpreted that to say that when the government oversteps its authority, it has violated God's law, and we are no under, we're under no obligation to follow it. So, I would appreciate you going ahead and passing a resolution. I'd like it to be mine. If it's not, just please do one of these. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charles Reed, and following him will be Jim Quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for the ability or the opportunity to speak. There are laws being introduced and enacted in our country that are grave, gravely infringe upon our constitutional laws and our rights to bear arms. We saw this blatantly demonstrated with laws either enacted or introduced in Virginia and other states. Shutting down our gun ranges, limiting purchase of ammunition and, to one gun, purchase of one gun a month, universal background checks, red flag laws, as others have already spoken about, even raising the age from 14 to 18 for young people to be able to be involved with guns. Disobedience to the most of these is a felony. Suspicious, suspicion of a non-compliance would also, would allow search and seizure without due process and with, with a, with a low burden of proof. Our Second Amendment, the rights of Americans to bear arms, is a guarantee, inalienable right provided by a cornerstone sewn of our republic. The laws do not stop violence, gun laws do not stop violence. It is only, it only removes the rights of law-abiding citizens to protect themselves and their families and others. There are those among us that believe that the power belongs to the government and not the governed. They disdain the Constitution and seek to whittle it away until it transforms into a meaningless document, rendering American citizens powerless. Example, Venezuela, the U.K., I mean, Hong Kong and Cuba. The attempt to take our rights, take away our rights to bear arms is just the beginning. Why, this is why I fervently support the reasonable effect and Second Amendment resolution that we, that will serve to protect and guarantee the rights that we already have. In October, I emailed a question, I emailed three questions for the purpose of determining where you, where the Cabarrus County, where you that sit on Cabarrus County will effectively, will safety and, excuse me, let me read that. I emailed three questions for the purpose of determining where you stand on issues that I will, that will affect the safety and quality of the, of those in Cabarrus County. Number one, do you believe that Concord should become a sanctuary city? Number two, do you believe that Cabarrus County law enforcement should not cooperate with ICE? Do you, do you, number three, do you support the Second Amendment? For questions one and two, only two of you agreed, two of you gave direct answer. One did not reply. This, I just wanna say one other, this was a letter that was, that I was reading from Ann Cannon because she could not attend tonight.
Great. Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Quick, and he will be followed by Ian Fries.
Good evening, Commissioner, members of the board. I'm a proud Republican. I actually voted for each one of you, so I thank you for serving our county. I'm a silent majority that loves God, loves family, and loves our, our country. What I've witnessed over the last several months in Virginia is shocking, as many have talked about. Bills filed to create teams to confiscate weapons, limit gun sales, and restrict ammo is alarming. You see, that's why so many of us are actually angry, that it's taken tonight for all of us to show up to have this resolution added to the resolution. It's concerning to us. When was the last time you saw this many patriots at one of your board meetings? Usually, this is a pretty empty hall. Unfortunately, we're not involved in, in our community, but it's taken thousands of petitions and signatures asking for a non-binding resolution affirming a right that each one, an oath that each one of you have already taken. I know for a fact that every member of this board has received multiple resolutions over two weeks ago, and while our neighbors in Rowan, Stanley, Union County, Iredell, all have looked at these resolutions, drafted them, and even passed them tonight, we still didn't have it added to our agenda until just a few moments ago. I understand the process that was cut and paste to many of us. I understand the process that was cut and paced to many of us, that said you'd have work meetings, you'd discuss it, you'd check with law enforcement, but it just seems kind of a, kind of a resist, kind of a unusual process for a non-binding statement. I don't think we followed that process for the census resolution that was passed tonight. We expect proactive leaders who will listen to the concerns of the citizens at Cabarrus County not to dismiss us as irrelevant until we show up and force. This is, this is a symbolic resolution to uplift the oath that each of you have taken, and it's concerning that it's taken all of us here tonight for you to take action. And it gives me pause to wonder, if we really were into a situation where our Second Amendment rights were at risk, how long would it take for each of you to take action to protect each of us? I do ask that you pass the resolution tonight.
Thank you.[661.12][661.12](APPLAUSE). Our next speaker is Ian Fries, and he will be followed by Catherine Long.
Got a little excited there, I apologize. I was brought to this country when I was an infant. I was actually made a citizen in this very building, and this is the first time I've been back. I wish it was under better circumstances. I have a very, very deep concern that people are pinning the blame on firearms themselves. Firearms are an inanimate object that only do as much as the individual holding them is willing to use them for. The American people own more firearms than any standing army in the world, and trillions of rounds of ammunition. If the American people who own firearms were a violent menace to society, we would know it by now. However, the statistics clearly state that if we were to take four major cities, Baltimore, Washington DC, New York City, and Detroit, the cities with the most crime, with the toughest gun laws, and we were to take them out of the equation of the most violent countries of the world, where we are up a little high, I'll grant you that, if we took those four cities out and all those statistics, we would plummet very, very close to the bottom of that list. I believe that, as history has shown us, the first few things that the tyrants of the 30s and the communists in the 40s and in the 50s did was they went after education and they went after firearms. They burned books, but first they had to take the guns. They had registration laws in Germany, red flag laws, gun registration, and finally, confiscation teams like are being proposed in Virginia. I was born in Paraguay, and my next door neighbor, if I had stayed there, and I thank God every night and every morning that I was not forced to stay there, as one of the last 20 kids, they let come to this country before they shut down adoption and would not let any more of us leave. If I had stayed there, I would have been witness to the Venezuelan people being massacred in the streets by their government and being forced to accept the horrible elections that took place. If that happens here, it will be our fault for having not come here tonight. This has obviously not been the case, and I think we can all thank God for that. Thank you for your time.[854.37][854.37](APPLAUSE).
Our next speaker will be Catherine Long, and she will be followed by Marie Tucker.
I didn't come with a lot of fancy words or a lot of information, but I just came to say, representing, I believe, most just common people of Cabarrus County, that I believe my right to bear arms is already in the Constitution and the amendments. I think it's a sad state that we have to stand here tonight and ask for a resolution to uphold those things, but if that's what it takes, then I'm for that. But it's my and our right as a US citizen and not the right of elected officials or politicians to take that away from us. It's our right. It's already been said. It's already been stated, and that's why we're here tonight. I'm here tonight, and I think everybody else is here tonight for the reason to claim, stand for, defend, and declare openly and publicly that it's my and our intentions, not just to keep those rights, but to defend them, and we will. And that's why we're here, because we don't want to have to do that, but I think that's why we're here, just to publicly declare it's our right, and we will defend it.[958.19][958.19](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Marie Tucker, and she will be followed by Barbara Strang.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here tonight also with the same thing about the Second Amendment. Not only did, not only did our forefathers want to protect their country from England, but other countries from invading us. I'll give you a statistic here. In Germany, in the Second World War, disarmed German citizens, Polish citizens, Italian citizens, and look what happened. They wind up, 6 million Jews, 5 million non-Jews thrown and killed, they were put into ovens. Now, what I'm saying is, I was a corrections officer in the 90s in Beaufort County, South Carolina, and we had more guns coming through the borders and up the coast with boats than people know about. We had guns in our possession at the jail that were not registered, of course, so the criminals have more guns than we have. Make that story. Now, another thing too is, when I was looking, when I was a corrections officer, I would ask a person, "Where did you get this gun?" "Oh, don't worry about it." They would take them away, and that was the end of that, but they never showed up for court, of course. These were coming through the border and by boats. Now, we'd be fair game to any country, not only in internal, our own country, but other countries knowing that we were disarmed. Look at the enemies we have. China, Russia, they would, they would know that we're disarmed, and we'd be, we'd be nothing to them. They would come in and wipe us out. But my daughter has a concealed weapons license. She trained for a year. She was safety, she learned how to do, how to use it right. She was in a grocery store two months ago, Harris Teeter, in South Charlotte. Two men in a van approached her, and all she did, twice they did, and she just stepped back and said, "Don't come near me," and they knew. Someone said, "Oh, she's got a gun." They jumped in the van and took off. They were looking to grab her. This is why I'm saying, anyone who wants to own a gun should take safety lessons, practice, and go to a good gun store that is reputable. I do not want Annie Oakley's or Yosemite Sam's running around, but we need to really pay attention to what's going on with the criminals in this country and our right to protect ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.[1118.11][1118.11](APPLAUSE). Our next speaker is Barbara Strang, and she will be followed by Stephen Bayer.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Barbara Strang, which most of you probably know, and I am here, just like every concerned citizen, along with the other 1,840 signatures, 1,840 people that have signed this petition in support of the resolution. There are 13 counties surrounding us that have passed similar resolutions with great ease, but that hasn't been the case here in Cabarrus County. To the citizens of Cabarrus County, it has appeared that you have been unconcerned about addressing the Second Amendment resolution, which has been called to question, which this has been called to question and concern as to where you stand on the Second Amendment. Let's not forget, you were all elected to stand up for the best interest of our citizens of Cabarrus County, and your actions and lack thereof has shown us that you have not stood with us from the first time you received word and the first time you received a petition. I'm going to keep it short and sweet, but I think this speaks volumes of where we stand and where we are, and we will continue to fight, no matter what happens here tonight. So I encourage you to pass a viable resolution that will protect the citizens of Cabarrus County. Do you want these? Would you like these?
Yes, please. Give them to our clerk.[1201.58][1201.58](APPLAUSE). Okay, our next speaker is Stephen Bayer, and he will be followed by Tom Williams.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. First, I'd like to say, there's been some mention of gun confiscation, quite a bit of it. If it ever comes to that, we know the only one that's going to help us is God. So what we're trying to do here is avoid that. So since we started this petition for the resolution to declare Cabarrus County a Second Amendment sanctuary, I've been asked why we need it as Cabarrus County is already a pro-Second Amendment county. You can call it a statement, you can call it symbolic, you can call it not binding. Think of it however you wish. Regardless of how much weight it holds, it shows that our county officials formally support the Second Amendment community. It shows we stand with our sister counties and all other counties across the nation. It sends a clear message to those that think they can infringe on our rights, they are wrong, and law enforcement and our elected officials will not comply with any unconstitutional legislature. I've also been asked why we should take this measure if there are no immediate threats to our freedoms in North Carolina at this time. Any threat to any state in this country is a threat to our state as well. As of October 2019, there are 17 states that have already adopted unconstitutional red flag laws, and there are over a dozen more states where these and other unconstitutional bills have been proposed. It would be naive to think it can't happen here at any given time. Why we would sit here and watch the walls crumble around us without doing anything makes no sense. Why are we waiting to be reactive instead of proactive? If you've taken an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the passage of a resolution shouldn't even be in question. Actions speak louder than words. For anyone who thinks this is a partisan issue, a racial issue, a sexual preference issue, they're wrong. We, the people, means everyone. Please understand one thing. This issue is not going away. I'm not going away, and we, the voters, we're not going away. So I urge you to pass a resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1366.26][1366.26](APPLAUSE). Our next speaker is Tom Williams, and he will be followed by Jennifer Dunbar.
Good evening. How are y'all? My name's Tom Williams. I'm a 53-year resident of Cabarrus County. I spent a large part of my youth teaching NRA hunter safety, rifle and shotgun merit badge, scout camps, and at various scout troops around, trying to promote a healthy sense of ownership to those young men and some Girl Scout troops as well. I was glad to see the Girl Scouts here today as well. Would like to thank Sheriff Shaw for addressing this tonight, and mainly, I would like to encourage us to adopt this resolution. We frequently see the case of gun control entirely grounded upon a constitutional defense of the Second Amendment. While the founding fathers' warnings about the importance of defending home and liberty with an armed population are as important today as they've ever been, this approach has some flaws. Our burgeoning government at that, in that day and age, knew the logistics of enforcing our Constitution would be impossible from the federal level, and it would have to be carried out at the state and local level. This would have to take into account the freedom given to the states and the local governments as both a blessing and a curse. As much as I would like for the Second Amendment to be unilaterally understood by everyone and never challenged, and inhabit enforced in every state as the framers of the Constitution intended, they had to depend on us to make sure it was handled properly. The Constitution was not meant to grant positive rights to citizens, but it was rather intended to recognize our natural God-given rights and restrict, and restrict the ability of federal and local governments to limit them. The founding fathers did not believe that these rights could or should ever be hindered. Instead, they saw that legislation that restricted one's natural rights should be handled by governments closer to the people themselves, including states and localities, and we're suffering greatly from that when you look at Virginia and other things going on in current events. This is why the Bill of Rights was not intended to ever apply to a state government. The many state constitutions shared similar similarities with the Bill of Rights. By 1820, only nine of 22 states had language explicitly protecting the right to keep and bear arms, and that number only grew to 18 of the 33 by 1866. The reason for this being that it went without saying that this right should never be infringed? Well, of course, that lack of state constitutional protection, protection did not mean that the states were necessarily hostile to gun rights until recently, especially for New York, Illinois, or most recently, Virginia. Wherever the Democrats can win a governorship, it seems inevitable that the restrictions on these God-given freedoms will soon be on the chopping block. This flies in the face of common sense, proven statistics, and the sincere intentions of our brilliant founding fathers. In closing, I would like to say that although this resolution is more of a symbolic gesture than anything binding, that we would like to see all of y'all step up and respect our wishes, that this be done in Cabarrus County and be done quicker than, as soon as later. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.[1630.32][1630.32](APPLAUSE). Our next speaker is Jennifer Dunbar, and she will be followed by Jeff Stamey.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Dunbar. I am a Cabarrus County resident, taxpayer, citizen, and a citizen of these United States of America, and recently, a property owner in Kannapolis. I am here tonight to ask that you support a resolution to protect our Second Amendment rights. You may ask yourselves, why bother? Why issue a resolution for those rights? After all, the Second Amendment is very simple. A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. That's very simple, and yet we see what has been happening in Virginia and even in North Carolina, the effort to enact red flag laws, where sometimes unelected bureaucrats or elected officials may determine to seize guns from people they deem dangerous. But we already have mechanisms and processes in place to protect the citizens and to determine if someone is a convicted felon or incompetent where they may not own firearms. There are already processes in place, so to enact laws like that would infringe our Fifth Amendment rights of due process. Now, to enact a resolution, a toothless resolution, what would the point of that be? You may already have discussed that amongst yourselves, because actually, we do have resolutions enacted in local government and on Jones Street, at our North Carolina General Assembly. The purpose is not to build in certain consequences, which of course would be tested in a court of law, but to make a strong public statement of support. Just like Sheriff Shaw had said, we are not unreasonable. We, Second Amendment proponents, are not unreasonable people. We are by and large moral, productive, patriotic, and law-abiding citizens. So we are asking you to please consider passing a resolution to make Cabarrus County a Second Amendment sanctuary. Thank you for your time.[1779.07][1779.07](APPLAUSE).
Our final speaker will be Jeff Stamey.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, and the council. Sheriff Shaw, thank you for standing behind us on the Second Amendment. I'm not going to waste time on a politician or a I'm not going to waste time on a politician or a statesman. I'm a voter and a citizen. I spent six years in the United States Marine Corps, a tuck of oath to defend our Constitution, and I still stand by that oath, and I respect y'all too also. I just want to reiterate that I am a voter, and everybody else here is too, and we expect you to step up and protect us like we voted you to do. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, you have been an extremely respectful and orderly crowd, and I thought that process was very smooth. I do want to correct a couple comments that were made, and if you'll indulge me by looking at my calendar for just a moment. It was stated, and I can't pull it up right now, but it was stated that this matter was brought to all of the Commissioners over two weeks ago. That is incorrect. The first mention of this issue or any proposed resolution came to me, if I'm not mistaken, it was March the ninth. That's what I was going to verify on the calendar.
January.
Excuse me, January the ninth. Our work session meeting was on January the sixth, which was our last meeting. There was also some mention that there had been delay in dealing with this issue. I think that most everybody here would be somewhat aware of public meeting laws, but in the event that you may not be, a body like this county commission or any other governmental body is only allowed to meet and make decisions in a public forum, just like we are in tonight, where the public has received advance notice of that meeting and has an opportunity to provide input. So, just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. This is the first meeting that we have had as a body to take action on anything since this issue has been brought before us. So now, we move to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of items that we have discussed at length at our work session two weeks ago, in a public forum, as well as I just explained, typically of a routine nature. I will also mention that any item that's on our consent agenda can be brought to the regular agenda by request of any one of the Commissioners at our regular meetings. So Commissioners, you have that consent agenda before you. Do I hear a motion that it be approved as presented?
That means?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move now to new business. First up will be the item that was added in the approval of our agenda, which is a discussion on a Second Amendment resolution. To date, I have received four different resolutions from four different individuals. I have scanned and emailed copies of each one of those four resolutions to our sheriff, Fan Shaw, also to our legal counsel for the Board, as well as each of our Commissioners. Each one of our Commissioners has in a folder before them tonight, a printed copy of each of those four resolutions, labeled at the top with the name of the person presenting that resolution. As I said, these have been presented to our county attorney, and so I would ask him at this time to make any comments that he feels appropriate for the Board to consider in looking at these proposed resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did receive the four resolutions over the weekend, and asked to just provide some general comments about them from a legal perspective, which I did provide to the Board. So I'm going to summarize what I had written to the Board about those resolutions. I'd heard about the resolutions, a little bit about them last week, at least about the couple of them at the end of last week, and so I knew that from that amount of knowledge that there were some legal issues with some of the language that was in some of the resolutions, and that probably certain changes would need to be made to the language in order to make them legal. The first issue that I saw with some of them was this concept of making the county a sanctuary with reference to Second Amendment rights. Unfortunately, in today's parlance, the word sanctuary connotes some area of the country in which certain laws that are already on the books are not being enforced. I believe this concept goes against the oath that each of the Commissioners has taken to when they took office on this Board. Another issue that arose with some of them was exactly what is the law concerning firearms? There's the Second Amendment, and then there's the amendment or part of the North Carolina Constitution. Those two are almost the same in terms of language. But there's also, you know, a number of laws on the books, both federal laws and state laws, that are already in place that construe those amendments, and also attempt to define what can be done with reference to firearms. The federal regulation of firearms arises from the U.S. Constitution, and from there, the North Carolina General Assembly has divided the ability to regulate firearms between the state, with the state statutes, and certain local ordinances that are allowed to be passed on a local level. Any language in the resolution that would say that Cabarrus County is not going to enforce the laws that are already on the books would not be legal. Another issue that arose with some of the language was that it seems to require the Commissioners in advance to decide exactly how they're going to react to a certain situation in the future with reference to firearms. And by doing that, it limits the legislative ability of this Board to conduct their duties in terms of the office that they have. So, those were the issues that I saw with certain of the resolutions and some of the language in them. Now with reference to this matter of it being binding or non-binding, resolutions sort of by their nature are really not binding in a legally enforceable way, but if the Commissioners vote for the resolution, then you would think that they would stand behind it. So, in that way, it would be binding. But, a lot of what's being talked about are decisions and laws that are not made locally or by this Board. So in that way, if this Board were to try to enact laws of that sort, those wouldn't be binding because they don't have the authority to do it. So, it really depends on how you define the term non-binding. And then, the other thing that seems to have come up tonight that a lot of people have talked about is this matter of determining what is constitutional and not constitutional. That's not typically done by a legislative body such as the Board of Commissioners, that's done by the courts. That's their purpose, is they decide what laws are constitutional and which laws are not. So that's not a function this Board can ever really engage in to determine. And everybody, or not everybody, but a lot of people have different feelings about what is constitutional and what is not, and that's a debate that goes on in other parts of the country as well as here. And when it comes to laws about firearms, there are people that feel differently about some of that. But those decisions are not made by a body such as a Board of Commissioners for a county in North Carolina, they're made by a court, and that would be the Supreme Court of the United States and the federal courts, but also our State Supreme Court in North Carolina and our Court of Appeals. So, I just wanted to point that out, that that's not a decision that's made here locally. Beyond that, I really don't have much more to say, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I think that pretty much sums up what I had advised you on over the weekend, and after that's really a decision for y'all to make as to what you want to do.
Okay, Board members will open the floor for discussions, and if you have any additional questions for Mr. Cook, I feel sure he'll be happy to address them.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start the discussion off just for a few minutes, and first off, I want to thank all of you guys for coming, you know, and for Rich giving us your, not ruling, but your recommendations there as to how it applies to the law and judicial and all of that. And needless to say, for the last, well, since we first heard about this, just less than two weeks ago, despite what has been said, you know, the delay and putting it off and all of that, that never has been the case. I mean, it never has been the case that we would just deliberately put something like this off. As the Chairman had made an explanation that our normal way of doing business, I won't be redundant and repeat all of that, we normally have the work session, then we discuss it just like we did here and like we're doing now, and then in two weeks, we vote on it. And that's pretty much the normal way we do things. I don't know how the other counties did, if they got work sessions. Most of the time, they're on about the same schedule as we are, I think. According to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, they have their meetings basically like we do, on the first and third Mondays of each month. But anyway, going back, you know, to this subject in hand, I think back, obviously, I think Larry Pittman said this, I wasn't here in the seventeen hundreds, whenever men and women that were forming this country, had they not had the arms that they had? Do you think that we would be where we are today? Do you think that we would ever got out from under the mother country? No. And if we ever lose the right to have guns, ownership, and all of that, that will be the end of the United States as we know it. And so, I've always been a Second Amendment supporter, and, you know, I don't have an issue with doing the resolution, although I think it's been said by several different people tonight, it's a statement, it's not a law. We don't change the Constitution, we can't, we don't have that authority for North Carolina or for the United States Constitution, we don't have that authority to do that. But we can stand up though and say, we support our Second Amendment rights, and we're going to stand up for them. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to say, and I'm sure there'll be some more discussions about this, I hope, you know, to bring this to a conclusion, so everybody can go home and feel good that they ain't going to lose their guns on my part.
Thank you. Any other items?
I have some remarks I'd like to make, but I'll wait for just a few minutes till we kind of clarify where we're going here. But I wanted to ask, I know that Sheriff Shaw, you mentioned a viable and reasonable resolution, and I would look to you after having read those and feel like what you feel like is the most viable and reasonable resolution that meets the legal piece of the ones that you read, if you don't mind sharing that.
Well, of the four I reviewed, the one that Jay White had proposed did not have the problems in it that I saw that I enumerated a little while ago. Not all of them used the word sanctuary, but two of them did, so there was that problem. And then, there was just some of the language that required that this Board do things beyond what your powers are, and, you know, some of that's, we can go back and look at the specific language of each of them, but I say from that review, the one that Mr. White had done was the one that did not have these problems that I identified in it.
So, then Sheriff Shaw, if I could ask you, do you feel like that the White resolution is a viable and reasonable resolution for you from the law enforcement perspective?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay, additional discussion?
Well, I'm just going to add very briefly that as a gun owner, I am certainly supportive of that right, what was spoken here tonight. I think the challenge for us was fishing through different language, and I think I want to thank our Board Attorney for that and the feedback that we got from our Sheriff, because that's an invaluable part of the process that this Board has to go through. So, it sounds like we may be on the verge of adopting a resolution, and I'm in full support of that. We may have some more comments or discussion, but I think we're on the right track.
Okay, any other discussion?
I don't have a whole lot of comments, I would just say that I'd be willing to make a motion that we approve the version that was submitted to us by Jay White.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution presented by Mr. White. I think it might be appropriate that we read that so that the audience knows the text of what we're talking about. Would you like me to do that? Or, okay. And this is the version that we just received the motion on. Whereas the United States Constitution is the supreme law of our nation, and whereas the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And whereas the Supreme Court of the United States has recognized in several opinions, including but not limited to District of Columbia versus Heller and McDonald versus the City of Chicago, that the rights guaranteed by the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution are individual rights, and whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution has been applied by the states by the incorporation doctrine and the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. And whereas Article One, Section Thirty of the North Carolina Constitution states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And whereas, "The right to bear arms is a fundamental right for self-defense, for the defense of others, including family members, for the protection of individual rights and liberties, and for the preservation of our United States of America and the United States Constitution. And whereas, 'The criminal misuse of firearms is not a sufficient justification to warrant the infringement of the rights of law-abiding citizens of Cabarrus County. And whereas, 'Each member of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners has a deep commitment to the rights of all citizens of Cabarrus County to keep and bear arms. And whereas, 'Each member of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners swore an oath to support, maintain, and defend the United States Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office. And whereas, 'Each member of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners expresses a deep and abiding commitment to protecting all of the constitutional rights of the citizens of Cabarrus County, and to stand in opposition to any law, executive order, resolution, or edict," edict that would unconstitutionally infringe upon a citizen's rights under the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and the North Carolina Constitution to keep and bear arms. And whereas the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners desires to express its intent to stand united as a county for the preservation and defense of the rights enshrined in and protected by the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution, and to oppose within the limits of the United States Constitution and the North Carolina Constitution efforts to unconstitutionally restrict and/or infringe upon such rights, and to use all legal means at its disposal to protect the rights of citizens to keep and bear arms. Now therefore be it resolved by the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, it intends to uphold the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Cabarrus County, and will oppose any law that unconstitutionally infringes upon the rights thereunder and/or under the North Carolina Constitution for the citizens of Cabarrus County to keep and bear arms." Okay. Is there additional discussion?
I just would like to make a few comments, if I can.
Yes, ma'am.
Obviously, I will support this motion and plan to vote for it, but I would like to discuss a few things that I find concerning about how we got here tonight. I wanted to review the events that have happened since our work session on January 6th. The comment was made, we had had the resolutions two weeks ago, we had never heard of it two weeks ago, received no resolutions, had not had any request from any public person to put it on the agenda, none. The first thing that I got, or saw, or I will say, as of today's meeting, I've received directly two emails from citizens and one text about it, and that's all that I had received, but I was aware of a lot of conversation on social media. After being tagged by Make Cabarrus County a Second Amendment County in several posts, I started doing a little research. I was trying to gain understanding why each of you, or those of you who are here, thought that the commissioners didn't support the Second Amendment. After all, each commissioner took that oath that you've heard about over and over tonight, so it goes without saying that we support the Second Amendment. This page, Make Cabarrus County a Second Amendment County, was started on January the 11th. This page was not even started when we had our work session on January 6th, not even started, that was 10 days ago. In 10 days, this thing has escalated to the point where the comments on social media have been amazing. As I mentioned, I was shocked when I opened it up, and the headline said, "No action to protect your Second Amendment rights," with a photo of all the commissioners, and then it said, "No vote on January the 21st." Well, I had several issues with the post, because as Chairman Morris mentioned, we have to be public in our meetings. We had no request on the January 6th. This is our first time and opportunity we had to take action. The request for that action didn't come before the meeting, it came in the middle. But 10 days later, the remarks that have been on the social media have all obviously believed that we weren't for the Second Amendment, that you were going to have to come and ask for your rights, and several of you mentioned that in here, that you felt compelled, that that was why you had to be here. What I will say to you is, there's a Board of Commissioners, there's five of us, not one of us can take action. It takes three commissioners to move something forward, and that has to be done in a public meeting. We can't just get on the phone and call each other and say, "You want to do this or not." That's not how it works. So we've tried to follow the rules as we're supposed to. The administrators of that Facebook page certainly should be aware of the requirement that the commissioners have, since one of them's a candidate for office. They above all should know the process. Steve Morris's email that he sent in response to many of the people stated this, and stated that we, you know, it was up to the commissioners, he followed the rules as the chairman, which I think some people said, "Well, that was ridiculous." Well, if you're on a board of five people, this is not a dictatorship. Each one of us has one equal vote, and so he can't just come in and tell us all what we're going to do. Can you imagine how a board would work with that, and how it would get along, and how it would move the county forward, as we've been able to do, by respecting each other and working together? None of that was ever pointed out on this Facebook page, justice and satietyism, with misleading statements to try and ignite you, our citizens, to believe that we didn't support that. The escalation of these events from the time the page was created on January 11th, which was just 10 days ago till now, has all the press here, has all of you guys here, under the impression that we were not for your Second Amendment rights. I never once was approached by the administrators of that group, or those of you who were speaking tonight, I got two emails, that was it, to ask me what my thoughts were on that. Instead, along with other commissioners, were portrayed as though we didn't support the effort. I began to question what would make administrators of this page take such action, and researched it a little bit. In doing so, I found out there were five administrators on this page. As I said, one's a candidate, and the personal page of that candidate, two supporters, and then a page that was created on yesterday is now an administrator. It became clear that this strategy was for other reasons, not to say that those people aren't supportive and passionate about the Second Amendment, but why maybe we weren't contacted and asked and put our comments on there? Now, you could say, "Well, you could go on and comment," and I could, but what you'll learn as an elected official, you don't usually debate these things on social media. That's just not how you do it. Some people may, but it's not how I do it, and I never will. So if you have questions of me, or you want to know where I stand on an issue, you can always call me, email me, I will be glad to sit down with you and discuss it with you. But you just have to, can't believe everything you read. I guess, so what I really want to say to you tonight is, as elected officials, don't always think that you believe what you read on social media. I mean, I think we all know that, but it doesn't appear like that tonight, because some of the remarks that were made, where did it come from? It didn't come from us, it came from the hype on that page for just the last 10 days. It wasn't created till January the 11th, and 10 days later, here we are. So if this has been going on for that long, my question is, why did it take until an election period to become such a big issue? So Virginia, wasn't not a big issue before? You know, so with that being said, you know, I just think that the lesson here tonight is, if you want to know where a candidate stands, ask them directly. In closing, I want to thank each of you for being here and coming and speaking, because at least we know when there's something that you are passionate about, or you think we're off track, you're going to show up, and that's what we want. And so that's good to know, and we appreciate you being here and taking that action, and I just want to thank each of you for the opportunity to serve you, it is an honor, and I appreciate your being here tonight. But please, in the future, feel free to ask me, don't take Facebook as the gospel, because a lot of times, there's other reasons for why they're saying what they're saying. Thank you.
Okay. Other discussion? I would just like to say that I am fully in support of this resolution. For those of you, and I think probably, I'm thinking there's probably somewhere between 15 to 20 emails that I got, and I think that's probably came to me as chairman, and I think because my address was published on that Facebook page. But I tried in the response to those emails to explain what our normal process here is, and the fact that we take very seriously the, I guess if we turn the tables, and let's say if we were voting on something, and I mean, hopefully, all of you are pleased by what we're doing tonight, because that's, I think we share the same vision, but if we were voting for something that you weren't pleased about, and we did not offer proper notice that we were going to do it, then I suspect that you might be upset. And so that is the piece of it that I take very seriously. The reason that I feel comfortable voting on this resolution tonight, which we haven't given the public notice, you know, when we publish our agenda and give notice of what we're discussing, this was not included on there. I feel comfortable in passing this resolution, because it simply restates something that I have already sworn an oath to in the past. So this is not anything that's in conflict with the normal operation of the board, so I just felt like that explanation needed to be made. And so is there any additional comments to be made? If not, we will move to a vote. So all in favor of the motion to approve the White version of the resolution that I just read, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Okay? That motion passes unanimously. We thank you all for being here, and we would like it if you'd come back every month. But we are going to take a brief three-minute break. If anybody needs to use the facilities, we've been here for just a little bit, and then we will resume with new business, just in three or four minutes. in three or four minutes. I would like to call the meeting back to order after a brief recess. We're now in new business. And so next up is item G1 from Finance, installment financing contract for various school and county projects. And Susan Fearington will speak to us about that, and will be followed by a public hearing.
Yes. So tonight, like you said, we are in need of a public hearing. Cabarrus County plans to enter into one or more short- or long-term installment financing contracts with the Cabarrus County Development Corporation, or one or more third parties, for an amount not to exceed $130 million to finance all or a portion of the cost of constructing and equipping public school and county facilities, and various real and personal property improvements.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of Susan? This is a matter that we've discussed on numerous occasions in the past, and I think this is just the next step in that process. So if there are no questions of Susan, I will now open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on the matter just described, installment financing contract for various school and county projects. Seeing no one stepping to the podium, I will close the public hearing.[1081.03][1081.03](CROWD APPLAUSE) Thank you, Susan. Did you have anything else?
The next item.
Yes. Well, the next item, yeah, which is another, but please go forward with that.
Okay. So the next step after we have our public hearing is the request for adoption of the attached resolution in your agenda. And there again is for the financing contract in the amount not to exceed $130 million. The lobs that we will issue are scheduled for issuance in February of 2020, and they're subject to approval by the local government commission, and we have our meeting on February 4th for that approval of the debt. So this time, we're using a draw loan structure we have spoken to you about before, a past couple of meetings. So this is just a resolution for us to go on, move forward with this debt. The last thing we need to do.
Okay. Any questions of Susan? Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving installment contract financing for various school and public projects in an aggregate principal amount of up to $130 million, and execution and delivery by the Cabarrus County Development Corporation of limited obligation bonds related thereto, authorizing the execution and delivery of related documents in connection therewith, and providing for certain other related matters.
That moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. We are happy to have Kelly Sifford with us to discuss the 2020-2021 home program prior to a public hearing.
Thank you. As we had discussed at the agenda session, we had met with Concord a few months ago and talked about participating in their downtown project that would also have a housing element. So we are proposing that we use our funding and match funding for next year to participate in that program with them. They have set it up to have 17 units of the project to be affordable housing units. One of those will be ours, kind of proportional to the amount of funding we're putting in versus the city. So it will follow the similar structure for what we did with the Prosperity Ridge project. Are there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Sifford? I would not have a question. I'd just make a comment. You know, I think a collaborative project like this is excellent for our community. I am so proud that Cabarrus County is able to support the efforts of what went on in Conapolis with our funds the past few years. That project is now, hopefully, will be occupied soon.
Yes.
And to be able to support what's going on in downtown Concord is, we can accomplish so much more collectively together than we could individually. So thank you for bringing this project to us.
Thank you.
And so if there are no other questions, I'll open the public hearing and would invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on the matter of the 2020-2021 home program. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. And I don't think that requires a motion tonight, correct? Then our next item is from the library, and we are happy to have Emery Ortiz with us to talk about that.
Hello, good evening. I am here to talk to you about a grant opportunity that the library system has to apply for. And it was a really quick turnaround time that happened after your work meeting, so I apologize for cramming that in there. But this is called the Inclusion Internship Initiative, and this is done by the Public Library Association. The goal here is to try to get a local teen as a library intern. And if you're awarded the grant, the grant will pay for the intern, basically. So it is a paid internship for a high school junior or senior. And the intent here is to get someone from an underrepresented community to help be a champion in the libraries for those communities. So if we are given permission to pursue this grant, we would hope to work with our local high schools and try to find an awesome teen who's really passionate about serving their community. And I'm sad our youth commissioner is gone, because he probably would have had some great ideas there, too. And then that teen would be responsible, over the course of the summer, for planning a community project that deals with diversity and inclusion. There are two things that we thought were interesting about the grant, and that is the teen and a mentor from the library would also get paid travel to two events. One is a kickoff event in Washington, D.C. in June, and the other is a wrap-up event in Chicago in September. So the grant also pays for that travel for those two people. And we think that we could get our Friends of the Library group to match for a parent to also travel, because that is not included. So we would be seeking that as well as part of that. But other than that, it's a very broad application, and it closes on February 3rd. So that's why I'm bringing it for you tonight.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions for Emery?
I do have questions. So you're applying for a grant. That grant closes on February 3rd, so then you'll find out when if you get the grant?
I believe it's March is when they announce winners. And there are 50 libraries that will be chosen.
Okay.
And I did forget, there is a slight cost to the county in employment taxes if this were to happen, and it would be $318. So that would be all that would be required.
I would say that's a pretty good deal, if we can get that sort of an opportunity for a young person for $318.
I agree.
So I am certainly in favor of what you're asking to do. So do I hear a motion in support of the library's request to submit an internship grant application?
That moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Just a comment. I can get you a contact at every single Cabarrus County high school.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Great.
And it's their job to find internships. So these are the people that you actually need to send it to, and they will make sure that the word gets out in all the schools.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we move now to reports, and at this time, we will receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities, or on various boards or committees. Does anybody have anything? Commissioner Shu?
Yes, I've got a little update here. I attended the Conapolis City School Board meeting last week, and I learned that the cheerleading squad for AL Brown High School, they won the state championship from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. And that whole team from AL Brown is going to be going to somewhere in Florida on February 7th and 8th to compete in the national championships. So I just wanted to go kudos to the AL Brown High School cheerleaders. There was a whole group of them, and real proud of them. Real proud of Conapolis.
Great. Thank you. Any others?
I have just a general comment.
Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
I would like to invite all the commissioners, everyone here in the listening audience. The Cabarrus County Human Trafficking Task Force will be having a community conversation on Monday, January 27th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Conapolis Performing Arts Center at AL Brown High School. January is National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. They invite you to come and hear from members of the task force, including our DA's office, law enforcement, and nonprofit leaders actively combating the issue in Cabarrus County. Plus, see the reveal of public service announcements created by local students right here within our own county. And I'm happy to say that a group that I sponsor, however, they do all the work, the Mount Pluton High School, HOSA, Health Occupation Student Association, Career Technical Student Association, they're completely student-led. They are one of the top five, and they will be presenting their creation, their PSAs that they created that night, and I, fingers crossed for them. I'm extremely biased. I don't know who the other ones are, but I would encourage everyone to come that night. Human trafficking is a huge issue in this area, and the more that we know about it, the better all of us will be, and the safer all of us will be. So again, it is Monday, next Monday, January 27th, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Conapolis Performing Arts Center on the campus of AL Brown High School.
Great. Thank you. Any other general comments? I would like to make one. I would just like to compliment this board on the way that business was conducted tonight. We had a large group of people here that were concerned about an issue. I think everybody was treated with a great deal of respect. I think the way that we handled the situation and the action that we took was professional and legal, and very, very, very well done. So it certainly makes me proud to serve on this board with the rest of you. And I think our citizens demonstrated that they appreciate your service and the way that you handle things as well. So a pat on the back for all of you in that regard. And so if there are no other comments, we do have need of a closed session tonight. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation, as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318, point 11A3.
That moved.
That moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are now in closed session. Thank you, television audience, for joining us, as well as all of you present.